Okay, this meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local newspapers on December 31st, 2021. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full Board meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Can everyone please stand for the flag? Salute, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm going to a Ministry of Office. I will come down there. Hello? I'm gonna read this statement once and you state your names. I'll pause first, okay? I... No, okay, I... Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I... Do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RF period S period 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in N period J period S period 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you. Welcome back. The Code of Ethics are on your tables. I ask that everyone sign the Code of Ethics and give it to me before you leave this evening. Thank you. Okay, right now, we're gonna have nominations for the Board President. I did receive two nominations earlier. I received a nomination for Sharon Angley. She was nominated by Joyce Simmons for Board President. Can I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Angley was also nominated by Malani Katamatori for Board President. Can I have a second on that also?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Board President? That being said, Ms. Angley, do you accept the nomination? I need a roll call. Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delator?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Kirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Earlier, I received a nomination from Ms. Joyce Simmons to nominate Malani Katamatori as the Board Vice President. Can I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Board Vice President? Ms. Katamatori, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delator?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Kirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
And Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, Board President and Board Vice President are Ms. Angley and Ms. Katamatori. Ms. Angley, you take over now as the Board President. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Cluffel, Ms. Katamatori, and Ms. McGurk. Welcome back. We're happy to have you. And next, we will move on to, I guess, public comments on agenda items.
Thank you for taking the time. Congratulations to everybody that was sworn in and congratulations on being President and Vice President again. Recently, I've been doing researches, several of you know, and I came across some data that was in 1988 and kind of earlier years. I can't get past then. But it said that the high school held, and this is, by the way, dealing with the long-term plan, the range in your policies in 7100, hence why I'm speaking on an agenda item. Back in 88, there was 1,283 kids in the high school, and that slowly dwindled down. Early 90s is like 900 or so. So right now, I see that since 2000, that the information that I can get, there's only 586 that you guys self-report. So did we just suddenly lose a floor inside the high school, or was it reassigned to something else? I'm trying to figure out where all that space went. On top of it, if the high school does have that much capacity, and if you dig further back, and again, it's newspaper articles, so I can't use them as as real sources, because sometimes even the news gets it wrong, we all know that. But it says somewhere between 1,200 to 1,500. So I'm just asking some questions here, because the transparency I'm having an issue here is, based upon today from the Hudson County News, there was an article put out today that September 25th, 2019, you guys put forth a building proposal, and it was slated for the referendum on September 19th, 2020. I've lived here 25 years. I didn't hear a darn thing about this. And that gave ample time for you to educate the community. We now have August 4th, where you got the LRP, I'm apologizing the acronym, but you got permission to do it. November 3rd, on the other piece of information that was put on the Hudson County site or article written by John Highness, had the top date of all the financials of November 3rd. November 3rd, I sat in front of the superintendent, the council president, or sorry, the Board of Ed President and Vice President, and you guys looked at me blindly when I asked. It was one of the 26 questions. And I asked you again after that for the financials. I have emails to show the dates on that. I have to find this out from the news that it had November 3rd on it? How is it that I'm only getting this information? We're less than, what, three weeks away from a vote? I just had somebody, a councilwoman, to tell me to trust the superintendent. How can I trust a superintendent when you had the data in front of me? Or in front of you, and you didn't give it to us? I mean, I've asked. I've been nice. I've been trying to work with you. I've been trying to keep the vitriol down. But how can I trust you guys? I mean, this is plain facts. I can go find this. You're telling me that a high school has 586 kids in its capacity right now? Based on 98, or in 1988, we had 1,200. I'll repeat it. Did we lose a floor somewhere? Did somebody take a floor off the top that I don't know about? So how can I trust you on anything else? How are we gonna be brought to the table? If you also look at this, if they're based upon the information that was given to us back when you submitted it in September of 2019, after the referendum, there's 30 days to submit your final plans. So I'm guessing that that's probably the same thing for this. So if it's voted on January 25th and it wins, February 25th, barring a good day, you submit your final plans. There's no time for community input on anything. We are supposed to be brought to the table before you do something, not after. Not after it's constructed. And I don't even want to go into the community facilities. Many of the people think when they hear community facilities, they can walk off the street and walk in. But I've read, after you guys educated me on it, that the community comes at the bottom of the list. But the community comes at the bottom of the list only if it's some prescribed way, in other words, through its recreation program or a group that you belong to, because you have to have an insurance policy. So there is no way the average Joe is gonna walk off the street and think they're gonna go jump in the pool, or they're gonna get on that ice skating rink, or the free community skate that's gonna be set up under something. So I am struggling here. The hockey rink, I hope you guys understand how much that costs. I have four or five estimates of what it costs to run a yearly rink. They range from $2 to $4 million, and they're nowhere near New York City. How are we gonna pay for that? How are we gonna pay for another school, which by your own quote at the last meeting was about $9 million, I believe you told one of the people in the crowd? $9 million? If I add that on top of the 11 for the bond and the interest, that's close to 35-plus percent raise in taxes on the Board of Ed side. That's not including what the city council and the county are gonna do. We deserve better as people in this community. This has been a cloak-and-dagger operation. I gave you guys benefit of the doubt, but I can't trust you any further. If I were to vote for this today, my vote is no.
Thank you.
Pat Waiters?
Patricia Waiters. I was hoping I could stand here tonight and congratulate the candidates to victory in this election. Maybe I could, I'm here tonight basically for the 3,000 people, 3,000 or so, that actually reached out to me, that did support me and voted for me in this election. The same way you guys asked for a referendum to be put on for January 25th, I spoke with Tom Clumpford in his entirety, and I explained to him the seriousness of bringing back the 50-plus one prior to the election. You recollect, Mr. Clumpford? With that being said, this is important, because last election, you guys ran unopposed, okay? Prior to that, again, people don't know about going, filling out petitions or whatever for the election. This election last six, three months, was horrible. You guys know I've been running 15 years or more, and it's taken every ounce of my being to silence myself and disappoint the 3,000 or so people that voted for me for the Board of Education. So still what my question is today here, coming here today to record it, so I could re-watch it every night until I could come with some type of conclusion on why do you feel it's no need for black representation on this board? I don't see nobody's feathers ruffling, and they really should be. What I did was my homework, and I'm gonna share with the administrator, because she wasn't here, I have some information that I'm gonna share with you, and it took a tedious process, because there's a lot of information to show you that racism is alive and well in this district. So whether you're willing to work with me or against me, your eyes, everybody's eyes is on this Hoboken Board of Education. So here's an opportunity for you to open up, unpack, and unleash the systemic racism in this town. And I'm here to work with you, not against you. I don't do well with bribes. I don't do well with threats. I don't do well with retaliation. I'm bringing you facts. I'm not gonna be disrespected. I'm not gonna be mistreated because I come fourth. Now, it broke my heart that you got, and I came to your office and asked you, I'm still, I went down to the state to see who it was that did not want the 50-plus one. Now, prior to the election, it was the 50-plus one before the election was moved. So people sitting back today, even pissed off about the no question, that's just a small piece of the pie. But if they knew half of what politics play in this district, it's a disgrace. It's a disgrace. From every council person that Ravi and Mayor Zimmer supported in this city, that's where the problem is. It ain't time to play place to blame. It's not time. When you came on this board, all of these members, most of them did come under the Zimmer's administration, under the kids first, they changed their name and titles, and it's the same bull crap. And it's time to stop. The buck stops here. Because what just happened in this last election was disgusting. There's no way you're gonna have a runoff for the regular municipal council, but you don't think it was necessary, because I would be on that stage. I would be on that stage. Three times a seat became available, and you guys had the majority of the vote, and you did not vote for me. You know why? They don't think it's a need for black representation in the Hoboken Board District. What other answer could it be? I don't have to go back and forth on Twitter and websites. I'm bringing you facts. What else could it be? I'm waiting. I'm waiting. Because being deceiving and deceptive with that no vote, that's just a small part of it. So, Ms. Administrator, I asked tonight, and I'm reading your oath. I've never heard this oath of allegiance, but I hope they follow through with it, because this is new to me. But I will be following up with you, with all due respect to the people that's been reaching out to me, and a legend that I'm being silenced because I work for the Board of Ed, which I find comical, because I'm like other blacks that work for the district, have leverage over my head where I gotta depend on this system. Okay, so that ain't enough to portray 3,000 people while I'm not talking. So to clarify things up, okay, Mr. Paul and Manny and the rest of you guys, the last meeting, I could not even sit there and enjoy the meeting like everybody else, because I was accused, okay, and this is people that worked in the district and went through the same thing I'm gonna do. I was accused, okay, of not speaking up, and it ain't favorable what you wanna hear. And that's another thing I wanna discuss with you, with your robbing rules. That's the racism within itself. I'm wrapping it up, okay, because I timed you the same much time you gave him. It might not be favorable what you wanna hear, but it ain't about playing place to blame. It's about doing what's right for this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Clark?
So much to say. Chris Clark, 518 Bloomfield. I have four kids in the district school. I am not gonna yell at you. I'm not gonna be disappointed. Paul, I actually had a conversation with you. I hope I was helpful in building your body of knowledge. I reached out to you again today to see how you're doing with it. Let's start with a couple of things. Does anybody up here know the cost in Short Hills per million dollars of market value in your taxes? Don't answer the question. I'll provide it for you. My brother just sold his house for under $2 million. His taxes were $58,000 a year. Mountain Lakes, $1.5 million home, sold. Taxes, $36,000. That is $24,000 per million dollars in market value. We're not talking assessed. We're talking about something that people can get their head around, okay? What is that number in Hoboken? You know the answer. The answer is 10. 10. We're talking about a reasonable increase to have a state-of-the-art school that not just the kids who are in the district right now deserve, but the kids that are coming up. There is a ground swell here that in the next two years, this place might have 700 kids. Do you think that's appropriate? It's not. They have nowhere to go. They start lunch at 10:30 and they finish at 2:20. That alone, when you're able to move that school to the mid, to the high school and provide a state-of-the-art facility, that answers your question. If you wanna sit there and play Financial Woodward and Bernstein, good luck. You're on the wrong, wrong side of this. You're voting against kids. You don't have kids that are 8, 10, 12, and 14. Okay, it's embarrassing. Advocates out there, embarrassing. They're not there for the kids. They're there for themselves. We have an advocate, doesn't have any children, didn't, not married, didn't do IVF, didn't adopt, doesn't foster, doesn't coach a team. But we're gonna listen to her on these, on this nonsense? She can come to my house. I have four kids. I'll leave you there for a week. I will come and pick up the body later. Berkeley Heights, another example. It's not just Short Hills or Mountain Lakes. These places are paying 10, I'm sorry, 20-plus thousand dollars per million dollars in market value. Okay, so what's, again, it's embarrassing. When you talk about the facility, this is not, Hoboken High School right now is Youngstown, Ohio, 1975. Okay, basketball, football, baseball, repeat. Basketball, football, baseball, repeat. Basketball, football, baseball, repeat. It's time. There are kids out there that are going uncomfortably, their parents are paying for private schools, okay? I don't even wanna get into that, into those sorts of individuals, because there's a perfectly good one here. But they think they're gonna play a sport. Well, I'd go to your school, but you don't have this. You don't have that. You don't have that. We need to take that away. We need to take away the excuse for what is imperious arrogance that leads to idiocy or worse. Okay, these kids now who thought they were gonna play hockey, thought they were gonna play baseball, guess what? They're all on the track team. Amazing. Who knew there were so many great javelin throwers or whatever? The kids are disappointed. They're upset. They're depressed. We have the opportunity here to have a facility that draws more and more students, better athletes, and have good teams pursue the student athlete. Forget the 10-year, 10-month-a-year soccer player. Go back to the old thing. You played three sports. You were a good kid. You participated in your community. You participated in your school. You learned competition. You learned success. You learned failure, and you learned commitment. That is the opportunity. For those people talking about a Cadillac or a Ferrari versus, it's nonsense. Have you ever done a renovation, and someone says, you know what, if you don't have the money, why don't you put in the GE profile, and then in five years, then you can put your Viking in? Okay, you'll never do it. Behaviorally, you'll never do it. When the wallet is open, is you spend the money. You're talking about 2.2% money. It is almost free. I say you should borrow a billion dollars and then put it in like a 3% piece of paper. Take the yield, right? Obviously not. The nefariousness, by the way, that is alleged, guess what? Back in the day, I've lived here 32 years, okay, longer than maybe Udon and Patty, right?
30 seconds.
They, back in the day, there was the horse trading. You have the land. Guess what they used to do? Pilots. 10-year pilots. No taxes for 2,500 units, and everyone else gets soaked. It's embarrassing. Okay, the fact that the city council hasn't said one of their kids, other than Mike Russo, to the high school in history, embarrassing. Vote again. If you vote against this, you're voting against kids, and you're really, really showing really who you are. And people will know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delator?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Kirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now we will go to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Paul, I can't read your last name. You signed, no.
Public comments on agenda or non-agenda items. This is our last public comment section. Yep.
So I think there's, there's some issues here that, as Chris mentioned, who we've known each other a long time, played rugby against each other, so it's good to see rivalry still exists. There's nothing that I have to say as a parent that I'm against children. I am simply against this plan. I wanna have community input. We can have a hockey rink. We can have this. We can have that. And we could put a beauty salon in there. I don't care, but as long as the community is included. And ultimately, in this, what we have now, if you only have a third of the capacity filled, which I would love for somebody to get back to me, maybe you won't now, after I've been a little bit saying that I'm against this, but I'd like to know what the true capacity of the high school is, and maybe show me from back when it was built in the 60s all the way to 2020, what those numbers were they submitted to the state. That's a little request I'd like to make now. Once I get those, if the number is 1,200, and we only have 450 kids or 456, I don't care where they're from, if they're choice program or they're from here, but that means a third, two-thirds of the school is empty. We can potentially close down hallways and refurbish the building. What's wrong with that? Have we explored that? This seems like simple, common-sense solutions. Or at least listen to the community. Did we do that? Educate us. Did you try that? No, it's cloak and dagger. And you yourself state in your FAQs the reason why you did this this way was because some political pushback in 2005 and 2018, 19. I get it. This town's very political. But you guys have now stepped in the political arena here. People are drawing lines, neighbor against neighbor. And it's not against kid, against whether I believe kids or whether I have kids or I don't have kids. Every taxpayer has a say in this. No matter what, if you have kids or you don't have kids, you still pay the taxes. You still pay the rent. I am disappointed when I look at your plan that you had for 187 million, I think was the last one that you put through in 2019. You did not include the miscellaneous items. That's amazing, that we've got $34 million of miscellaneous fees on this new building. You've had this since November 3rd, this breakdown. The community's asked. I've asked. Where's the breakdown of these miscellaneous fees? Is it $10 million for a Zamboni? Is it $5 million for chairs? How much of that is in computers? Because I'm not paying for a computer for 30 years. The shelf life of that is two to three years. That's bad finance. Chris can even back me up on that. You don't finance a computer for 30 years. Bottom line, I wanted you guys to be transparent. I think you owe us that. You have a perfect time in the community where you can make yourselves important. Most people don't care about the Board of Education. Let's be honest. You do, and I do, if I have a student, if I have a son or a daughter in the system. I'll tell you right now, I didn't vote for anybody in the Board of Education in this election. You know why? Because when I went in that booth, I was too busy doing what I had to do for myself, but I didn't see you guys up in the top right-hand corner.
You have a chance now that you could have brought the community to really care about what's happening in here and look at the kids. If you went about the right way of marketing this whole thing. You could have been just as important as a council meeting, just as important as the mayor. And you could have brought the community together. But instead, we have to find out from a newspaper about information that you've been sitting on since November 3rd that we've been requesting. Three weeks left. I still haven't seen a flyer come out in the mail to tell us that there is actually Jan. 25th, there's some, there's a referendum going on.
30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
We deserve better, guys. And I'm not up here to chastise you because you're all volunteers. But you have to listen to what we're saying and listen to the community on this. I speak for myself, but I know there's a lot of people that listen to what I'm saying. I wish I could vote yes for this, but under the current plan, I am pro-children. I am against this proposal. I would love to see another one and say yes to it. Thank you.
Pat Waiters?
Paul, just a few things I want to reiterate on what you said. I take care of all the kids in the district. Okay? So when the comments that I was getting to last week and when I went to the high school meeting, Pat, you saying no, say the kid, you, you going against the kids. I know dirty politics. Please, people, I'm telling you again, this wasn't just the board trustees. If you want that hot potato to fall in your lap, this was originated by other big politician bullies that's involved in this. It's bigger than just our Board of Education. So don't come at me playing politics. I don't care about the kids, I don't have kids. I raised my three nieces and nephews in the district, my own three kids in the district, the underserved, unforgotten, ugly, unattracted, according to Leon Gold, kids in the housing authority district. I lived in this district when it was kindness that was looked down on in the high school. And still to present, rewind, Councilwoman Emily Jabois said, well, my kids will go to the high school. That's racist within itself. Can I tell you why? Back in the days, those was the punishment schools. If you went to the high school of kindness, that was a punishment. Okay? So this is how I could tell when you want to be important and run for office and serve half of the community, not the community at large. That's why I said, we can't do it in one night, Ms. Administrator. It's a bigger picture. And exposure is the key. We gotta unpack, unleash, expose, and do something about it. It ain't time to play place to blame. Because I know not 10% of black people will be in that new school bill. And I could bet my life on that. The disparities and the mistreatment, you cannot keep looking the opposite way like it don't exist or it didn't exist for the old Sue said, well, I wasn't here. Shame on you to come and adopt it and rubber stamp it instead of changing it. Changing. Nobody ain't against nobody, kids. I want a beautiful school for all the kids. I want the best for all the kids. I want a good education for all the kids. The black and brown kids in this community has been underserved for far too long. How dare you use a gadget like this to play place to blame? Oh, y'all don't care about the kids. And knock on those vulnerable people through on the housing authority and give them a free basket of food to tell them to vote yes? How dare you? And then look in my face and say, you don't care about the kids. I care about the kids. My actions speak volumes. When them supporters go in that machine and vote for me, it speak volumes. Now, I don't have no millions of dollars. Y'all spending millions of dollars to run against me. You got the mayor and everybody else in your corner and say, oh, we not political? He said it right, the town is political. Paul, you got some grace, don't you? It's wasting a lot of extra time and energy. It's politics. Pure politics. So you don't got to admit to it, it's, it is what it is. When I applied for the Board of Education, I remember there was an ethics committee. And we had to take the ethics over. I wonder how many of you took the ethics over? Because you all knew about this school coming way before the election. Deals is cut behind closed doors, you right, for public office, CNN, Hoboken. Since the 60s. So the deal was made. So now you look deceptive to the people, you ain't even trying to change that. Like Paul said, you got an opportunity to change that. And say, hey, I want to make some corrections. I don't want to just be another pea in the pie. It's disgusting. And I was a candidate that ran and opposed against the ticket. And you don't think there's no pressure on me? None of y'all picked up y'all phone and said, well, Patricia, how do you feel? I had to learn from the county. I had to learn from the state because I do my homework. I don't trust no politician. I trust the people. And I will continue to support the people. Because I'm not playing into nobody's dirty politics. I care about the kids, I want the best for our kids, the best. But I want also diversity, inclusion, include our kids. Don't look down on our kids because they ain't kindness. Or kindness is the punishment school. Y'all got money, they say. The rich people could put their kids anywhere they want. And that's how Hoboken been for years. By the time they in middle school, their kids is going paying politicians to put them in high tech. Their kids don't go to our high school.
30 seconds.
With that being said, I'm going to support the people that I made a, I took an oath and a lesion to serve. And I will continue to run for this Board of Education and every other city council there is for the betterment of the people. Not dirty politics. Let's undo this monster. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Rivera?
Hello and good evening to all and happy New Years to you. I'm here to ask a few more questions to you guys. I don't know if you could hear me correctly because I'm going to speak very calmly, as calmly as I can, as clear as I can, so I can get my message across. So, I took this and I studied it as best I could. I read it and I read it and I read it. Still, even the questions that you ask yourselves here don't get a clear answer. Don't know who answered them, but, uh, still, the cost is the same, but you're not factoring in what I asked the last time in regards to the maintenance, in regard who's going to clean the facility? Who's going to fix that skate rink? If something goes wrong with the Zamboni, who's going to run the Zamboni? Do we have to pay somebody extra? Is that another contract? These are the questions that the people want to know. These are the questions that should have been answered in this and should be answered on your website. Again, not here to point fingers, as everybody said, but here to state a fact. No one, no one, I'm sure no one in Hoboken is against better facilities for our children. I say our children because all the children that go to school are Hoboken's children. So that's all of our children. Our responsibility, by the taxpayer's money, and everybody to get the best facility. So yeah, we want the best. But if we have a building where I graduated from, I still walk through those hallways, they're still, they're still good. We could fix them. What are you going to do with that building? You're going to have to use it, or you're going to have to sell it, what's going to happen? That's number one. Number two, I would like to know, you say in here, as Mr. President Saddle stated, to use any of the facilities, even the tennis court, does it have to be a nonprofit? Do I have to become a nonprofit? Put it to you? Because, you know, how am I going to get to use that unless I go through this whole procedure that first has to go through, a whole big to-do? Again, I also don't want strangers in that facility just to walk through it, of course not. But where's the clarity? And as far as, uh, the cost, how come nobody just asked the cost of this referendum? You say you can put it in November, which would help. The candidates here perhaps that wanted, congratulations, you're swearing in again. But how about the other candidates who didn't have a chance to speak on it? Is that democracy? No. It is not. It is not democracy. Democracy is when everyone participates and everybody speaks. See? And that is what's going on here and that's why it feels funny. Well-intended, as I said the last time, but it's not clear. It's not clear where is the money for that? Who pays for that? Where was the mayor and the people he runs? Which I guess now is almost everybody in the council. Why did they not mention it either? Did you communicate with them? I don't know. See? And again, as Ms. Waiters was, I also was a candidate. I didn't have an inkling of this. And now the people who voted for me are also asking me questions. Manny, why didn't you tell us? Why, what, what, what is this about? I say, whoa, read the thing, ask them questions, I know this much. So I gave them some information, but it's not enough. If this goes through, this is going to be a disaster. You're going to have protests. You're going to have a lot of people mad. But again, this again is starting not to look like a democracy and more like a dictatorship. I hope it's not. I respect all of your time, I do dearly. But I'm asking myself these questions. Because as well as I'm asking you, I'm going to ask the other council, I'm going to ask every council that I go to, why? Why is it not transparent? Why can we not get the questions answered? And that is really the point here. People are, don't feel satisfied with the answers to these questions again.
30 seconds.
So.
30 seconds.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your time again. If, if somebody could help us out and ask for these questions, whether it is tonight, whether it's on your website, we need to know why. And again, nobody knows that this is happening, basically, unless you're connected. So I appreciate your time, thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Chris Clark?
Can I get 20 minutes?
Uh, yeah. Just before you start?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Sorry, I just wanted to just, um, respond to one thing that Mr. Rivera said, the, just, which is very specific. But the tennis courts do not belong to us, the tennis courts will belong to the county and they'll be accessible in the same way they are now. I'm pretty sure that's pretty clear in the FAQ. And if you do read the FAQ under the section about amenities, there is a bolded section. First, we outline what our current policy is. And then there's a bolded section that clearly states that if this referendum were to be approved, we will then begin the process of, of meeting with the public, meeting with the community members, meeting with the city to figure out what is the best and most efficient way and, and, I guess, most inclusive way to have the public in especially the facilities that are available from the public entrance, right? So that's the auxiliary, um, gym, that's the natatorium and the rink. So I know everybody keeps talking about our, our existing policy, but I do believe that it is very clear, in fact, bolded in the FAQ, that that is the existing policy. But if this were to be approved, that policy can and will be changed to make the accessibility very different than it is now. So I just wanted to make sure you know that because it is very clear in the FAQ, I think it's bolded.
Could we take one more moment? Mr. Rivera, just a note as well, you did mention that you attended Hoboken High School. The facility is going to be the middle school. This facility will move, if the referendum is approved, will move into the current Hoboken High School, which will then become Hoboken Middle School. You did mention something about will be sold, will be this, and that is simply not the case. This building would then be vacated and could be redone. And I think that's a very important thing to have on the record this evening is that that facility, the existing Hoboken High School, should this referendum be approved, then becomes Hoboken Middle School. So I just wanted to clear that up for you. Nice to see you and happy New Year.
You know what? We can't have, we can't have a dialogue.
If I may. By the way, that point right there is so critical to understanding the totality of this endeavor. It's insane.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Can you just direct your comments?
It's insane to think that in two years, okay? I do a lot of projections, a lot of forward thinking because I want to be ahead of something, I want to be there for it. You're going to have 700 kids here, easy. There are so many kids looking over the aisle, so many people who are displeased with the private school offerings, okay, that have underserved their kids. There are so many people that are going, hey, the Clarks are doing this, so-and-so's. You know what? We could actually have, this could be great. Okay? We are committed. All right? And, and the middle school alone, okay? By the way, if you've ever done any building, retrofitting something is absurd. It will cost you more money, you will have fewer services. The rate of rate of change, and I know, Paul, you understand second derivative, this is actually, could be even a third derivative, which is called, uh, the jerk, but the, the, the second derivative is the rate of rate of change in technology from 2008. If you had done this in 2008, this place would already be obsolete. You have the opportunity to do something amazing here. 5G, maybe 6G. Who the hell even knows what the heck that means, right? I mean, all we know, it's going to be better. Okay? AI, real, real proper, uh, learning facilities. Um, amenities that are not amenities. These are standard in the suburbs. By the way, I coached Patty with, with Coach Madeline, so like Mackay. By the way, he's not playing football, he needs a rugby team. He needs, you know, these guys need a good basketball court. These guys, you know, uh, uh, Zionah plays softball with my daughter Tegan, okay? I coached all these kids. And which is why when I talk to people and I ask, you really care about kids? What the heck have you been doing? By the way, you get a thing in the mail about voting and you don't look at it? Come on. That's ridiculous. You're a grown man. That's all I'll say with regard to that. But you have an opportunity here to retrofit something? That's Loserville. Okay? You need that school for what is going to be probably 700 to 800 junior high students who then are going to be looking for their path. And their path will be a volleyball team, a girls' volleyball team that the first, you know, district win, that they, they, they won their division. The soccer team, same thing. People are paying attention. You will see growth in the student body of people saying, you know what? My kid, you go to St. Peter's Prep? You're not playing hockey, that team is predetermined. You go to, that is, you go to St. Peter's Prep to play baseball? That team is predetermined. There are two slots for 30 people. Okay? Hoboken can have great athletes, great sports. We can have student athletes. I was a student athlete. You know, you can be an athlete, you can be in theater, and you can be a student. Or you can be in the band. A lot of kids want to play sports. A lot of parents, especially in urban situations, need sports. So to sit there and claim that this is some sort of Hilton that we're building is so outrageous. And again, it is against kids. You are against kids. I know plenty of people, they virtue signal, okay? They got their flags flying. I'm not that guy. Okay? They sit there and they vote a certain way, but then they send their kids, just like Patty said, to private school. It's embarrassing. The city council has done it for years. The mayors have done it for years. I am not going to be that guy. All right? Zionah, my daughter, good friends. Okay? I, tons, you know, uh, Lolo.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. I'm sorry, um, I'm, I'm speaking to Patty only because, so tons of kids that, you know, my kids play every sport. They've wrestled, these are girls, they've wrestled, they play softball, they do, they do everything. And the reason is because, is because the multiple touches you get, so that you have real friendships. All right? And that you, when you go to high school and you go to any school, you know everybody. And they may not all like you, that's okay. That's okay, but they, they know you. This community is ripe for this. And if you do vote against it, you can say what you like, but you are voting against children. I assure you of that. And it is a losers, a losing battle. And you'll, you are who you are. You said that you only care about the Board of Ed if you have, you know, someone in the school system. Well, if you have a two-year-old, clearly, I guess you don't care. All right? Because they're not in the school system yet.